Okay, why don't we get going? I really appreciate this group joining all of you, each of you, for taking the time to join us on the Zoom call. And I do hope that very soon we will be able to have our meetings in person. And we used to have these meetings in 2019 in person. And thank you Mayor Stan Bogosian for joining in. It's great to see him. He tries to make, he's a busy man. But it's great to see him join this meeting today. So, you know, we used to do these meetings in person and I really enjoy the interaction with people. And we actually ran this in pretty much every city within our congressional district. Many of you may not know this. Our congressional district cuts across three counties, which is San Mateo, Santa Cruz, and Santa Clara. With about three-fourths of our people, I keep looking at the right because that's our attending list. So I'm not, I don't have a cheat sheet or anything of that sort there. People have asked me that in prior town hall meetings, like, Rishi, do you have notes on the side? Not really. So we used to do these town hall meetings in person. I do hope and pray that we have those days back pretty soon. Let me just turn off my phone, otherwise it keeps, okay. And so we ran this in like Menlo Park, in the Mountain View, Palo Alto, Felton, and Ben Lomond, and Boulder Creek, or visiting people in places like Xante and Long Peak, or Davenport, or Loma Mar. We actually had a town hall meeting at Loma Mar, at the Loma Mar Market. But obviously, in our cities like San Jose, Los Ceros, Campbell, Saratoga, so we have taken the time because I believe the engagement with people is extremely important for me to build awareness and to hear the voice of our residents, our neighbors, so that it can help educate me. I do need the guidance. I do need the input, the perspective. And many of our residents have lived here for many, many decades. I only moved here to Silicon Valley in the year 2000. The Y2K, and that's when all hell broke loose. Our economy tanked, and my friends still blame the dot-com explosion, implosion to my arrival here in Silicon Valley. And that's what I do. So, but, you know, I, 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 this is going to be still a Zoom meeting today. And we'll do the best of using this forum. If you would like to send a question through, I can see a lot more folks are joining as we are getting going. If you would like to send a question, please send it via your, let's see. Okay, via the chat, so you should be able to send it across and or ask a question. And hold on just one second, okay? I will, I need to make some changes here, and I will be right back. So just, but, but let's, let's keep going, you know, why, why wait for that? Okay, so essentially, you know, I'll run through a quick intro of myself. I see many new names and new faces who have joined us today. So I'll run through a quick intro of myself, and then we can sort of go through the Q and A format. And I promise you, I will not take up too much time talking about myself. And, and just, just to provide you a little context for our conversation, and nothing like an introduction that will make it perhaps a little easier. And so why don't we get this going? So essentially, when you look at myself, you know, Rishi Kumar, I'm a high-tech executive. I work in the big data analytics space. We roll out solutions across different verticals and that primarily deal with solving the data challenges. And in the past, I've worked for companies like IBM and Cisco. So many years in Silicon Valley tech. And what I tried to do well as a high-tech executive was to take on some of the challenges, some of the challenges around the community. And that's what I tried to do. And what I started doing was applying that tech framework, that innovation framework, to everything I do as an elected leader. And, and so this is something that, that became my calling. It made me much happier as a person. I would never have dreamt ever that I would be running for office. That was never in my realm. And I've been, I realized that as I was engaging around me in the community, okay, it looks like I have some internet issues. So I, you probably lost me there for some time, and hopefully I'm back now. But what I was saying was that it just made me much more happier of a person to be out there solving problems in the community, which led to my run for city council in 2014. And the very first year, the very first time we were running for city council, we barely won the election by 71 votes. And it was a nail-biter. You know, we were very nervous for a few weeks. The, I was always leading. We never lagged. But I came in third in that election. And, and it was just, you know, we, we had invested, we had run a pretty solid campaign. I was very proud of the campaign we had run. But the branding was still not quite there with the people of Saratoga. And, and so what we decided after that very narrow win was that we'll put in some time and effort into, into actually getting stuff done. And so essentially, you know, we put in quite some time, energy into, into the top challenges. You know, in Silicon Valley tech, what we tried to do is we focus a big chunk of our effort on our top challenges, which is what I tried to do in my first term. And I, I focused upon a couple of major challenges that everybody was screaming, bloody murder, and they wanted things fixed. And interestingly, I was the only council member that engaged on those challenges. And so, long story short, we were re-elected with the most votes in 64 years of Saratoga. And that's a sharp contrast to winning by 71 votes coming in third, and then actually beating the mayor in the 2018 run pretty handily. And I'm quite, quite proud of what we did because it lends credence to, to the work of elected leadership. If you put in your heart and soul into, into helping the world around you, into helping your people, then, you know, it is, it plays out well at the ballot. And it sort of told me, it basically was a huge boost of confidence to me that, you know, in good faith, if you, I would spend 50, 60, 70 hours working for my tech job, and then I would at least invest about 40 hours working on my city council, community work. We were also running lots of like coding programs, entrepreneurship bootcamps for the youth of Silicon Valley through a nonprofit. And so it basically led to my run for Congress, which was one of the reasons why I'm running for Congress is because Congress is filled with technologically illiterate congressional members. And I don't say that, actually. It's one of the local congressional leaders who actually says that very often. And if you have seen the tech hearings, you will realize that they, they are, they are, they, they become spoof videos. And, and so I believe someone like me who understands the world of tech from the inside can impact some of the challenges we have here. But also that ability to add jobs, grow the jobs, grow the economy, which is a huge focus for me as a tech executive to see. Silicon Valley is the 19th largest economy of the world. Can we make it a top 10 economy of the world? Can we expand it? Now, most of the innovation that has happened here is because our elected leaders have stepped aside. And they have stayed out of the way, which is what we should sort of do. But based on the tech transgressions that we have seen over the last few years, it seems like Uncle Sam is going to jump in. And perhaps we will get that question, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. And so, you know, in the last run, running for Congress, we did about 127,000 votes. We fell short. And, but I call it like when you climb Mount Everest, you have to hit that first base camp. And, and so we hit that last year. We were short by only 45,000 votes. And we were curtailed by the pandemic because we couldn't go and talk to people. We did like, we went to 100,000 doors. We made a million phone calls. We had a grassroots army of over 1,000 volunteers that came from 29 states. So quite impressed and happy with the campaign that we put together. But, you know, it's one or zero, and we hit a big zero last year. But we believe we can pull it off because we gained the most votes compared to any other challenger in 30 years. Anyone else who has challenged Congressman Schu. And it was a massive effort we put together for two years. I would say over 20 months. And so we said, if 20 months can get us 127,000 votes, we need another 45,000 votes to win this. Can we, can we do this? Can we make this happen? And the answer came out loud and clear. So yesterday, I was out knocking somewhere in San Jose. And I was told very politely, I introduced myself as, hey, you know, my name is Rishi. I'm a council member in Saratoga, running for Congress. And I was told very politely, Rishi, this is not Saratoga. You should not be out here. You should probably, this is not even unincorporated Saratoga. I was told very gently and politely, I said, yes, yes, you're right. But the congressional district stem, it starts here and it goes all the way to Menlo Park. And so we have put together an army of people. Typically, I have a moderator for this panel, and what, what I've said is, let's all get out there and, and make change happen in the world. Let's engage with people. And I will be managing this Zoom meeting myself. Hey, you know, as a tech guy, I should be able to do it myself. So that's the plan today. Now, you know, we'll talk a little bit about my agenda as well. But let me talk a little bit about what differentiates me from Anna. You know, Congressman Schu in the last 30 years has done only four bills. Way short compared to the impactful bills that newbies like Congressman Rohana has done in the last few years. And so we, we should expect a lot more from our elected leaders. Four bills, and they are actually very trivial bills. So I think we could have done a lot more. A platform is a God-given gift, and that's what I look at my elected leadership role in Saratoga. I should be in front of solving the major problems. And Congressman Schu with only four bills, she was elected in 1992 at the age of 50. And I'm not sure what else can be accomplished in the next few years because she is definitely running, is the sense I have, running one more time. And, you know, I, I, I try to get it done in sharp contrast. That is the reason why we were re-elected with the most votes in 64 years. And if you would like to read about me, you can go to rishikumar.com/aboutrishy. And you can find an introduction blurb, rishikumar.com. Let me send it to all of you. This is my website. Please click on that and go to About Rishi, and you will be able to see a little description about me, but I won't dig into, get into those details. The second fact that I would like to talk about is Congressman Schu has sold out to Big Pharma. That story is loud and clear because when we go door to door, people are telling us that that is a cause of concern. And, but we also hear that, you know, it's like every politician does that. So what's unique about Anna, the fact that she has sold out to Pharma? And I really don't have an answer to that. But what I say is, it's sharp contrast to what I would do because I'm a problem solver. I'm a mechanical engineer by education. And I will never sell out. In fact, I've challenged San Jose Water Company. So I see if you are from the city of Saratoga, San Jose, Los Ceros, Montesino, Campbell, and Cupertino, if you have joined this meeting, then you have felt, hopefully, something that we have done by pushing back a very powerful, profitable water utility company, San Jose Water Company. And so far, my story is, we have rejected, reduced, suspended nine water rate increases. And I'm not making this up. You can go take a look. I just sent you the URL. Please click on that. And you can see every rate increase that we have challenged. We even rolled out a mobile app to make it easier. And then finally, you know, one of the key points of differentiation is that Anna is a little out of touch with the different challenges that currently Silicon Valley is going through. She was a little out of touch at the California fires, you know, when she was out there at a press conference. And I got a lot of emails from people. They were extremely upset with Congressman Schu because she was talking about the tour she had, the dinner she ate, while they were waiting to find out the status of their homes, whether their home had burnt out or not. So rishikumar.com/outoftouch, I just sent you the URL. Please click on that, take a look. But there are many more URLs. You know, we have to the challenges that we are going through. They will be back. I guarantee you this. If you go to slash traffic, I just sent you the URL. You will find some, a policy statement that we have that talks about our plan to fix the traffic issues that we have. Then if you go to the managed growth, it's about our plan with housing. You know, there is a huge push for housing today. And it doesn't have strong foundation of well-thought-out pragmatic policies. And when you look at tech, we have a significant tech policy. Please go take a look at that. Rishikumar.com/tech. Actually, this morning, I was browsing through Congressman Schu's Twitter feed. She was talking about broadband legislation that she is doing to bridge the digital divide. And, you know, she's been there for 30 years. Our internet has been around for like 20 years. Why are we talking about it today? She should have been proactively in front, doing this. After all, we are here in Silicon Valley. Now, the very future of an economy is contingent upon how we deploy and allow access to our students, to our citizens, to access broadband, to access the internet. Because it's become a very powerful tool. And looks like Congressman Schu just woke up and decided that we need to bridge the digital divide. And, you know, I mean, I wouldn't do that, you know, I mean, these, these things are extremely important. They are critical. And, you know, we have a policy on crypto, on digital currency. And please go to this website link that I just sent you, rishikumar.com/tech. And then when you look at fire safety, we have, we have, let me send you the URL as well for fire safety. Fire safety. Now, if you were face-to-face, I wouldn't be able to send you this URL. So I'm going to use or misuse the Zoom forum to send you these links. And hopefully, you're sitting on a laptop or something, you can click it. But you don't need to click on it. You can just hear me walk, walk you through. And, and this is my final link I'm going to send you, which is coronavirus. And that, that is a huge component. One of the things that also differentiates me is, you know, I'm all about getting things done. And Congressman Schu has got nothing done in the last 30 years. And I'm not saying it in the jest because if you go and look at her record, and this is what I talk about, which is, here is the link that I'm going to send you, rishikumar.com/deceptiveshu. Because she claims 45 bills, she only has four. And much of our candidate statements in the, we analyze them. They're only a forward-looking story. They do not talk about results that I have achieved in the last two years. It's only things that I'm going to achieve in the next two years. And then this vicious cycle repeats again and again and again. Oh, my God, I've already taken up too much time. So let's see. I'll talk about top policies that we have, job creation. We have to, we have to invest in infrastructure. We have to look at the pandemic biwarfare, cyber warfare preparedness. And so those are some of the things that we talk about as part of my policy agenda. You can visit rishikumar.com/priorities and, and look at the rest of my policies. So with that, what we'll do is, we'll take some questions. I want to make it as interactive as possible. And once again, thank you so much for joining us today. I really appreciate that. And so if you have questions, please send it my way, and we'll start picking it up. Okay, so I have the Q and A panel open right in front of me. And so the first question I see, we have Bob from Menlo Park. And, you know, this was the topic of the email that I had sent out. And it was about the Wuhan Lab investigation. And this email that we sent out, interestingly, got the most clicks and reads compared to any email that I've sent out in the last two and a half years. And I was a little like eye-popping surprised, like what happened here? But I think it's a very important topic. It's a very serious topic. So, you know, the scientists at Wuhan Labs in the probe have actually admitted that they were bitten by bats. And if you look at, I referenced Washington Post fact-checker Glenn Kessler. He had declared that this was all a hoax conspiracy theory. And suddenly, it's become credible. And he called it like virtually impossible in the past. And Senator Tom Cotton, I got a little flack from people who said, why, why are you referencing a right-wing bigot or whatever they said? And, you know, my take is this. I really believe that we have had enough of this fight between Democrats and Republicans. I want to team up. I want to team up with Republicans and Democrats. I'm running as a Democrat, but I call it not going left, not going right. We have to go forward. And that's what I seek to do. So I will reference anybody. I will reference President Trump. I will reference President Biden. I will talk about the inadequacies of what President Biden is doing. I will talk about the inadequacies of what President Trump is doing. And at the same time, I will talk about the positives, right? Because we are not the blue state, not the red state. We are the United States. So that's the reason why I will talk about. And I see Congressman Schu taking credit for that in one of her emails she sent out. She said, I have begun the investigation of Wuhan Labs. No, I'm sorry. It was Senator Tom Cotton last year. I think it was like April or May when he started talking about the lab's location in Wuhan. And he was pressing China for answers. So the history books will actually reward him if it turns out to be right. We don't know yet. And let's talk a little bit about Congressman Schu. She finally woke up on May 6th, earlier last month, more than a year later. And she finally asked for an inquiry from Secretary of State Anthony Blinken. And there was a letter sent out, so she talked about it. It's good. You know, it's like a year late, you woke up, but it's good. It's good that you are doing that. And, you know, my concern with Dr. Fauci was, he was saying last year that no masks are needed. And that was broadcast in the recent email discovery. And as a scientist, you know, it's pretty clear that masks, I mean, it's, you know, it's irrefutable that if you wear a mask, it will make, it will alleviate any health possibilities. In a smog, if you have traveled in Asian countries, people are wearing a mask. Because, you know, you have to, you have to stop breathing that bad air. It's very simple. And so that concerns me. And, you know, when you look at something else about this, there are two theories of COVID-19, right? There are two alternatives, and I, I truly don't know how this is going to play out. There are two alternatives. One is that it was, it came about because of naturally, you know, the origin came about, the, they call it the zoonotic spillover, where a pathogen leap from animal to human. It looks like a science fiction movie. But that was a theory that was very, very popular for the last year. And if you said anything else, then you were banned from Facebook or any social media, you know. So, so it was kind of interesting where people were not very receptive to any other possibility. And now there are 18 prominent scientists across the world which say that the other theory is viable, where it came from Wuhan Labs or some other source. And in fact, President Trump, interestingly, has asked for $10 trillion from China. And, you know, good luck on trying to get that money from China. But I think if every country in the world decides they want to challenge China on this. Now, also, I've seen that Dr. Fauci is funding the so-called research in Wuhan Labs. So I don't know what is going on, you know. But the bottom line is there are more than 300, 3 million people who have died and perished. And perhaps the number is even significantly higher than that. And, but, you know, beyond this, what is concerning to me is the state of the media. Because, you know, it's the, becomes the left wing and the right wing. And we don't have a truth wing, looks like. We need to have a truth wing. And it was actually an amateur sleuth that broke out the Wuhan Lab story from India, who embarrassed the world. And connecting the dots, this guy goes by some sort of an, you know, the, the identity is hidden. But this guy's on Twitter, and he's been tweeting about the story, and I've been following him. And, and finally, Wall Street Journal broke out the story. And, and finally, Joe Biden, President Joe Biden, has demanded an investigation. So this is an about phase, but I truly do hope that we will get to the bottom of this. It's extremely important that we do that. And then, and because we have been severely exposed, we would like to also talk about getting prepared with a pandemic and biwarfare, and even cyber warfare, because there have been hacking companies. $6.1 million was a ransom money that was given to a company that is paid out by a company to get access to its data. And I prefer you could, the conspiracy theory was that there are terrorists. There are the, okay, I again have issues with, okay, I'm back. So the theory was that it could, we could have terrorists who are actually traveling the world carrying viruses. And that's some fear I've heard from people also. And I see that, okay. Okay, so I see some questions. I'll just wait for questions from Charles and Daniel. Because they are very specific to housing, and we will actually answer the questions on housing. But let me just get through a few of the national questions first, if you don't mind, Charles and Daniel. I really appreciate that. I'm trying to go by sequence of questions. But the, the next question is from Cindy. And Cindy is asking about Anna's 45 bills versus four. And, you know, when I read this question, I don't think so Cindy is believing that Anna is, Anna must be truthful about the 45 bills. And there should be some other, other mode of thought or reasoning. Why the discrepancy between four bills and 45 bills? And so I invite everybody to go to rishikumar.com/deceptiveshu. And please take a look at that. You know, we have explained it loud and clear. So it's like, you know, when you play a game of basketball and you're shooting a three-pointer, and the ball hits the front rim, clanks off, falls down, and then you, you celebrate. Wow, I hit a three-pointer. That is what is going on with Congressman Schu. I'm not kidding you because, you know, if we, we have analyzed, let me send the, the URL once again. And, which is great question. I really appreciate. You don't have to believe anything I tell you. And so Cindy, I thank you for bringing up this question. Now, if you go to the URL, you will see that we have analyzed her campaign mailers from last year. And there are a few things happening. Firstly, some of the bills that she claims, she's not the co-sponsor. It's someone else. Yep, she might have participated in providing feedback. But the only thing that matters is sponsorship of bills. And the record on that is Congressman Schu has only four. That, if you ask, in, in fact, I've talked to a local congressional member right here in Silicon Valley. And the person agreed with me. The person said that, yes, the only, only number that matters is bills that you have sponsored. Co-sponsorship, I called it out at the debate with Anna, where Anna talked about, I co-sponsored the Green New Deal. And I said, it doesn't matter, you know, co-sponsorship. I've seen, I've shadowed Senator Jim Bell in Sacramento. There are hundreds of people who reach out to him to get his co-sponsorship because people are trying to build a coalition. So the Green New Deal has hundreds of co-sponsors. The fact that someone co-sponsored a bill doesn't mean anything at all. Yes, you, you're supporting something. But it's like a train that is ready to leave the station. And they are like, hey, come on, come on, come on in, come on, jump in, jump in, jump in. And so somebody jumps in because it's like, hey, it's, you know, it's easy stuff. The train is ready to go. I might as well go along with it, right? So, so that's the nature of co-sponsorship. But the third aspect of this, which is very worrisome, is Congressman Schu has claimed bills that never saw the light of day. And that's the basketball analogy. The, you completely missed. It never got signed into law, but you're still talking about it. Which is, you know, it's like the glitz and glamour of Washington that has been applied on the eyes and ears of people for 30 years, or perhaps something like that. I'm not happy about that. You know, our elected You know, our elected leaders should be factual. It's a question of ethics. And, and then when you look at Congressman Esu, the, the, the angle of conflict of interest. Where as the Chair of the House Health Subcommittee, she has accepted lots of money, number one recipient of pharma money in the US House, number one bar none. And then she has chosen to pass legislation to increase the price of healthcare. And I'm not making this up. And let me send you the link for this one. This is, and these are all like validated third-party sources. So click on this link from San Jose inside. Here is somebody from the Healthcare Coalition who's writing a pretty scathing remark about Anna's performance on the Healthcare Subcommittee. She is playing ball with Big Pharma, not so much the people. And every legislation that, oh, why, why has Anna been quiet about generic drugs? We need generic drugs, generic vaccination that would save lives of people all across the world. This is not the time for greed. We need to save lives. People are dying and many countries just don't have the wherewithal to roll out vaccinations or medications. But Anna has been very quiet. I believe that we should do generics as quickly as possible in a pandemic. And, and see how we can save lives. So Congressman Esu, for the longest time, has been batting for Big Pharma. And that fact is out there, which is, that is a fact. Where is the fact? The fact is right here. I just sent you the URL, rishikumar.com/facts. And these are third-party sources we have referenced. Okay, I think we spent enough time on this question. I'm so sorry about that. Let's go on to the next question. And let's see. Hopefully I answered Cindy's question. Cindy, if you have anything follow on. I would like to say this, that I'm going to pick up any and all questions. I got an email from Zain Morris the other day. He said that Congressman Anna Esu is always deceptive. Her town halls are structured to allow only softball questions. I know this firsthand as she will not let me ask any questions. So the teleconference calls that she runs. You know, we believe in doing face-to-face town hall meetings. I will not do teleconference town hall meetings after we win in twenty twenty-three. The idea is to meet with people and hear them and see eye to eye. But also, the, the town hall meetings of Congressman Esu are choreographed to prevent controversial questions being asked. Oh, here is Clark. I voted for Rishi, but I'm now concerned with, oh my God. Maybe I should not be asking this question. It's a little controversial. And I should not be asking the question. But I will. So, because I'm never going to shut out a free, free, the, the free speech. Congressman Esu sent out letters to, to all these cable companies telling them why they were carrying Fox News. And both sides, the, the red party and the blue party have been very annoyed with that. Free speech, we need to have free speech in the country. And that's why I'm going to pick up an every and any and all question. So Clark says, I voted for Rishi. But I'm now concerned with Rishi's keep nine Supreme Court judges. What is keep nine? Anybody knows what is keep nine? I'm considering not supporting Rishi now. Keep nine. There are nine Supreme Court judges and the, the wing of the Democratic Party has been talking about packing the courts. Let's pack the courts. And let's add more judges so that we can get our Democratic Party policies through, through the Supreme Court. And, you know, I don't agree with that. And if you go to rishikumar.com/keepnine. Okay, here is the URL. I just sent it to you. Please go take a look at that. And the reason why is very simple. It's very logical, actually. You know, I'm, I'm a, I call myself a pragmatic politician. And the reason why is if, if the Democrats go and add, let's say, five more judges. The Republicans, when they are back, they will add ten more. Then the Democrats are back. They'll say, oh, we'll add twenty more. Then the Republicans are back. They'll add fifty more. And we'll have a thousand Supreme Court judges at some point, right? It's not sustainable, right? Simple logic. Simple logic. Okay, so I, I think I'm not going to dig into it anymore. But Clark, I, I please ask you to consider this. I am, I was honored to have your vote the last time, last year. And I hope you can still stay with us. But, you know, the, the, the Supreme Court, the judicial system is supposed to be bipartisan. And we can see how judges, you know, they, they get, they get nominated by the president, they stay there. And then they really start flapping their wings. They want to do the right thing. Hopefully. And, you know, we need to, we need to create a culture of bipartisanship. It is very, very important to me. And extremely because we don't have that. We constantly have this fighting in Washington. And it's, it's like a style statement. You know, our elected leaders are all essentially, they are fighting with, they, they make it a big deal and they, they go to their favorite channel and they're like, look at me, you know, I have so much bravado. I'm fighting with these other guys. But you know what? Nothing gets done. And that's the story of Congressman Esu too. Thirty years and nothing has been done because you are so very comfortable playing partisan politics. And then you apply the glitz and glamour of Washington locally where you're running. People are not seeing through that stuff and people keep getting elected again and again. Okay, I'll go to my next question if you don't mind. Hopefully that addresses the question for Clark. My next question is, you know, it's actually, we just went through Memorial Day, so I, I'm a veteran. America celebrates Memorial Day. But I'm not sure if America understands the service and sacrifice. And this is Josh from San Jose. So, you know, my hat's off to you, Josh. I really, really appreciate you for serving and for doing your part in protecting America. You know, I came in as a graduate student. And, you know, I don't think so. I've made the sacrifices that, that so many of our forefathers here in America have done for hundreds of years to make America the country it is today. And I'm truly appreciative. And I try to read these books to, to, to have a deeper understanding of what went on in America, right? And so Josh, I salute your courage. My, my, I'll send you my campaign and my email. And please reach out anytime if there's anything I can help with. I just sent out an email to everybody. Please reach out, Josh. I really appreciate everything that you do. And my simple story is, I think we can do a lot, lot more. And one of the things I talk about, Josh, is not sending our, our troops in harm's way. And that is probably one of the, the best way for us to celebrate Memorial Day. You know, we have American troops that, that are fighting wars that they should not be fighting. And they are perishing on soil they should not be perishing on. So, so I'm against war and, you know, I would fight for peace. And so if you go to my website and use the search box and you search for war, so go to my website, rishikumar.com. Put in war in the search box. And you will find a policy paper that we have. And I will send the policy paper to everybody. Here is the policy paper. And my take is, we need to stop these wars. We need to create a peaceful society. And we need to be growing our economy. We need to be creating education, providing better water, fixing our healthcare. And we should repurpose the seven hundred and thirty-three billion dollars that our nation spends, which is greater than the next ten countries combined. And we should not spend it on arms. But we should spend it on things like education and healthcare. All, all things that will be put to use right here in America instead of having hundreds of American bases out there across, across the world. And the war is also changing. It's not going to be missiles and traditional warfare. It's going to be bio warfare, cyber warfare. We need to be ready. So you divert some of our dollars into fighting these types of wars. Again, once again, Josh, I salute your courage. Thank you so much for serving. And I'm at your service. If there's anything I can do to help you, I will be very honored. Oh, here is another controversial question. And this is Betty. Betty is asking the question. Why would you read Josh's book? Oh, it's just one line, Josh's book. What is this book of Josh? Sorry, sorry, Betty. I know what you're talking about. It's the, the tyranny of big tech by Josh Hawley. And Josh Hawley is obviously Republican and, and Betty must be a Democrat, I suppose. And, and my, my short answer is, I want to read books from everywhere. You know, it's about educating myself. And there's always learning with the views of the other side. And, you know, when I was on the Planning Commission in the city of Saratoga, I would hear both sides of the story. The you know, people showing up and saying, I need this passed. And then the flip side, people showing up and saying, why this doesn't need to be passed. And what, what happened was I became enriched from that learning, listening to both sides very keenly. I could, the, the eventual project that would get passed would become so much more robust and richer based on that. And so, so my, my take is that when you are listening to both sides, it makes it better. Though, you know, we are working on an op-ed piece which is, you know, big tech is the topic by Josh. And I believe Josh is on to something when he talks about how big tech has grown much more powerful. And the op-ed piece we are working on is that big tech needs conscience. Tech needs a conscience. Otherwise, the hammer of Uncle Sam will fall on you. And I'm not completely thrilled over the last few years with what has happened with big tech. And they are flush with cash. And they can actually go out and shut down voices if needed and things like that. So big tech has to operate with responsibility. And so the, we need to have a playbook. Tech needs to operate with a conscience. And this is something that is going to be extremely important to me in my first two years, to start talking about this and get big tech to embrace that formula of operating with a conscience. And, oh, here is another question from Stacy. It keeps going back to those forty-five bills of Anna. Okay, and, you know, obviously this is the very first time you're talking about it. So folks are not not exactly, they are not exactly going to believe. But this question is, I came to this meeting as I voted for Anna for decades. But I'm concerned with her lying about forty-five bills. I looked through your website because we sent out that link, I suppose. And, but the question she's asking is not about those forty-five bills or four bills. How would you operate differently than Anna? Why should I vote for you? Yep. You know, the vote is never a given. You have, the votes have to be earned. And, you know, Anna has obviously played her cards extremely well to get re-elected for fifteen years. People ask me, you know, what has Anna done well? And I tell them that she has played the cards extremely well. She's been in the Washington system. And to survive for thirty years. I mean, how many of us survive a Silicon Valley tech job for thirty years? How many? How many? You know, those days are gone. Doesn't happen anymore. So obviously, there's something good that Anna has done to survive thirty years in Washington. But, you know, it's based on the foundation of doing nothing. But we are not going to talk about that. I'm going to talk about why would I do things differently than Anna? For one is, you know, it takes a lot of courage. My politics is fearless politics. And so I'll give you two things, right? I can talk about this for like thirty minutes. And, and Stacy, if I don't answer your question, please send me an email and I would love to have a follow-on conversation with you. But what would I do, do things differently? I'll tell you two things, right? It took a lot of courage for me to challenge San Jose Water Company. I went against my council members. And they said, Rishi, we don't have jurisdiction over San Jose Water Company. We can't do much about it. And so I challenged San Jose Water Company and then I was pretty fearless in my first term. A cash-rich company, they were, they made fifty-two million dollars profit in twenty sixteen. They could have had a helicopter dropping flyers all over Saratoga saying, do not elect this guy. But my purpose in politics is what? It's not to get elected again and again. My purpose is to solve problems. And, and my take was, if I, as a council member, I'm not taking up the biggest challenge that Saratoga and Silicon Valley is experiencing with these super high water rates, then I would be falling short. Simple. So I decided to dedicate my time into solving this problem. I didn't, I don't have, I didn't have that fear factor. I'm not going to sell out ever. When, as a council member, when land developers, they came contributing money to my campaign. You know what I would do? I would return it. And one time, this one guy came and he contributed like a thousand dollars, not a whole lot in the twenty eighteen, my reelection campaign. I was at work that day. I looked at that contribution. I said, who's this guy? And for city council, typically you don't get too many thousand-dollar campaigns, campaign contributions. So I went and checked. And I, and then I looked in profile gentleman. Digging around, poking around, and turns out he was involved with multiple development projects. So in about forty-five minutes, I'd returned that money. I said, no, I'm not going to take money from a land developer because I do not want to have the pressure. So this is going to tell you, Stacy, what I would do differently. You know, I will operate with integrity. Because integrity in politics is very important to me. Whether I win or lose, it doesn't matter. I will stay fearless. I will be there only for the people. I will never sell out to Big Pharma like Congressman Esu has done. And I will always do the right thing. Now, here is something I'll tell you, Stacy. I cannot tell what city you're from. But if you talk to anybody from the city of Saratoga and, and also from perhaps some of the other cities around where they have seen the work that I've done with water, which are the cities? San Jose, Los Carras, Montes, Reno, Campbell, Saratoga, and Cupertino. If you have friends in these cities, call them and ask them. You know, how, what do you think Rishi is about? What, what? How do you think his performance has been as an elected leader? And that would be telling. So I can tell you, Anna and myself, we are both Democrats. But, you know, we see the world with a different lens. With a different lens. And I'll be keenly invested to be fearlessly solving the most important challenges. The, my campaign, for example, started in the poorest part of our district. Where Congressman Esu has never stepped, stepped foot into. Because I'm keenly interested to solve the homelessness challenge that we have. And to address the challenges of people, specifically the ones who do not have a voice. When you take the elevator up. I grew up in a family where in India, where it was difficult. Sometimes we would not get good quality rice to eat. And, 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 and making it here to the United States, I believe, if you have taken an elevator up to the first floor, send it down to the people. That's my aspiration with, with politics, to help people. I'll take one more question before we get into the, the, the housing questions that are there. Karen is asking, what is your plan for the first two years in case you win? What, what will you be working on? I think we are beginning to run out of time. You only have eight minutes. So I'm going to like, I'm, I'm so sorry. I can be very verbose at times. And, you know, unfortunately, if, if you guys would be able to see me or you can talk to me, you probably have told me something by now, but you guys are very kind. You have decided to not tell me that. But my, if my wife was here, she would be like, come on, can you please be a little bit more concise precise? So I'm going to try that, right? First two years, tech exodus and job creation. And that is very, very important. We have to stop the tech exodus. People are very happy. People tell me, people are leaving, let them leave. But, you know, if we become like the Detroit of the eighties, that's not going to be good for us. Where if the jobs leave, what are we going to do here? You know, this would become like, you know, Silicon Valley will lose its luster. And we have been very successful in attracting the best of minds from not only here in the United States. Like Scott McNeely, I had a meeting with him the other day. He came from, from the Midwest, right? So we have all these folks who came from different parts of the United States. And also from the world. We need to make sure that our innovation culture is thriving, alive and kicking. Tech, we have to stop the tech exodus. We have to create more jobs. The pandemic bio warfare, I talked about it. Homelessness, I talked about it. And education, education is also very important to me. And this is the fundamental framework of success for any community, any society. And which is the reason why I've run like Lego Robotics Bootcamp. We're going to start innovation centers where we'll have the best of minds from the youth, the professors, the, the tech entrepreneurs all co-mingle in these innovation centers. And rolling out startup projects. You never know, you know, some of the middle school projects I've seen, they are extremely well thought out. You never know, you know, some of the middle school projects I've seen, they are extremely well thought out. You never know if a middle school kid can launch a startup. I want to create that opportunity for the youth of Silicon Valley to succeed with the with our startup economy. Okay, so let's go to the housing questions. Charles, please comment on the move to build multiple units on one lot in single family. Yeah, it's a flawed strategy because we are not thinking, considering. Things like, so when they do that, so let me talk about how this is going to happen first. The Senate Bill nine and ten, what is happening is the our Sacramento legislators are in cahoots. They are together with the land developers and we are changing the policy bills on housing in California. They're not going to build in Boon Town, California, not in the boonies, they're going to build right here where the money is. Because the land here is a gold mine, it's specifically targeted to to communities in Silicon Valley and in Southern California. And so this move, Senate Bill nine, which is going to be voted on Wednesday. In fact, today I sent out an email to a lot of people telling them to express their voice. It's going to be voted on the assembly, it passed the Senate. And what it does is it allows lot splitting, any single family lot in any part of California could be split into two lots. And then with ADUs and JDUs, you could potentially have six families living on that. So if a city like Las Altos Hills, which is predominantly single family homes. They would actually grow in population by potentially six times, right? And that is a lot of population growth. The Santa Clara County is population is about two million people, Las Altos Hills is about eight thousand people. If you allowed each single family lot to be split and have six families, the population of Las Altos Hills would become fifty thousand. Approximately fifty thousand. The, what about Santa Clara? Santa Clara would explode to maybe four million, maybe five, it's not going to happen tomorrow. But it will happen over the next few years, what about transportation? What about traffic jams? What about schools? What about water? We already have, or we have been seeing droughts. So you know, just to talk about building housing is, it's not very smart, that's, I'll just leave it at that. So we do need housing, but we need to build a better plan and my plan is actually a lot better. In fact, you will find an op ed piece at this site, managed growth. Please read that op ed piece. Which talks about a better plan to build lot more housing. But to also keep the quality of life going, click on the op ed piece on this link I just sent you. And and you can. You can find my policy perspective on that, hopefully I answered that question, Charles. Daniel is asking, why is the Saratoga City Council not seeing SB nine? And other bad bills now in debate priority, these bills will destroy our city's quality of life. Now, you know, I I think what I've seen, Daniel, is our council members play checkbox politics. They have sent out a letter to, they have created a resolution and and actually I was part of that. That we are, we do not want local laws to be preempted with housing. And they sent out a letter, we sent out a letter to David Cortezi, who's our senator, but nothing beyond that. So it's like checkbox politics, you know, yes, I did my part and then somebody says, what are you doing for it? Oh, I did it, but not enough, not enough, you can do lot more. So at the meeting, last council meeting, I asked people, I asked my council member colleagues, how many of you have tried to have a meeting with David Cortezi to discuss this? How have you, how have you engaged the community to to express their voice on SB nine? How have you engaged to actually talk about the issues? How many people have you met? Right? So unfortunately, you know, it's like, you know, there are lots of bad apples in politics and I've been watching this. For so many years now that can't do much about it. You know, people getting, they get reelected too, I don't know how. But but I I wish people would pay a little bit more attention with with the impact our politicians are 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 having. Now, when you look at, for example, SB thirty five, we did a Kito Village project. And we did a ministerial process for approval by city staff. It circumvented the Planning Commission and the City Council. I didn't, I didn't vote for that, not me. I said, no, we have to follow some due diligence, let's figure out what else we can do. But this was approved four to one by the city council members. And now we find that there could be potential contamination on that site. And if that contamination had been discovered before the fact, it could not qualify as as an SB thirty five project. And that project apparently has been approved by city staff, the construction has not begun. So I've asked our city staff to investigate this and figure out what's going. You know, I I have to politics, Daniel, and I will not be able to speak on behalf of some of the other council members. Charles has asked a question about. Yeah, I've always heard that good complex decisions are made with five to nine main considerations. Scottish, the Supreme Court of the United States is as big as it should be, those are long held opinions, what is your view? Yep, Charles, thank you for asking that question. I I I promise everyone, I didn't pay Charles to ask that question. This question I already answered with my policy, I am in preference to keeping nine, not zero. Sent out rishikumar.com/keepzero, no, it's keep nine, keep nine. So click on that keep nine URL and you will find my policy. I think nine is a great number, we need to keep nine and we need to create bipartisanship with our with our Supreme Court. Any other questions before we wrap it up? We are exactly, wow, look at this, three thirty, three thirty already, I'm I'm like impressed, maybe I didn't speak as much today. Hopefully I answered all your questions. I once again, thank you so much, if there are no more questions, we'll call it a wrap. And we'll take this video and be posted online if you would like to watch it again or forward it to your friends. And I see so many people and everybody is very quiet, nobody's asking questions, oh, let's see, there's one more. Oh, Charles is saying it's very funny, thank you. I'm not exactly known for my humor, I'm just, I used to, I used to run an open mic at the Blue Rock Shoot. I don't know if any of you have been to the Blue Rock Shoot in Saratoga, it's a coffee shop with the with the very nice stage. I really miss that place, oh my god, you know, it created such amazing memories. And the reason I started doing that was because we wanted to bring new foot traffic to help our businesses. I was helping out the chamber with defining their social media strategy. And they said, Rishi, our businesses really don't get a lot of support, so I said, let's do something fun. So we started the open mic. And we ran it for many, many years before it was, it was demolished and they are building, they have built a town home already on that site. But I started anchoring that event and I would be on stage. And a little flippant with my tongue, I would just say whatever, and I think our team has tried to hide those videos. But I I really enjoyed that and it it's sort of my public speaking skills improved considerably because I started organizing that open mic. I was looking for an MC and I was like, who should be the MC? My wife said, why not?